I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Level.
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Parnell.
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
I'll second. Either way, it works.
Whatever you want to do, Jenny.
I got it.
Any discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Level.
Yes.
Mrs. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes. All right, this is our last board meeting of the year, so this will be my last board meeting as president. Our next meeting, we will be doing, we elect new officers every year, so thank you for having the pleasure of serving the board, and I look forward to electing new officers at the next meeting. So, superintendents, comments?
I'm going to pass and wait until the end, so we can get to our esteemed championship guests.
All right. Mrs. Logan, pleasure to have you.
And I'm getting the "I," so I'm going to follow Mr. Miller's lead.
All right, with that, we'll move right to Student Spotlight.
Good evening. On November 9th, the Lakota West girls soccer team finished what they set out to do: win a state championship. It's the first girls' soccer title since 1999. The team, which is ranked second in the nation by USA Today, finished the season with a record 22 wins, and is the first undefeated soccer team in the history of Lakota local schools. This evening, it is my pleasure to introduce head coach Bridget Reader, who will tell you a little bit about the season and what it has meant to the team.
Well, thank you for having us tonight, I really appreciate it. So I know through everything, it's been kind of overwhelming support from not just the administrators, the teachers, the staff, but from the district, the community, so it's been a wonderful ride, and it's been special from, you know, the very get-go of the preseason, all the way to now. So, thank you for kind of having us and recognizing the girls, and taking a minute to really honor the hard work they put in, and the staff put in, and the administration, everybody behind the scenes. So, like they kind of mentioned, incredible season in terms of accomplishments, rankings, but I think the really special part is, you know, we ask a lot of, you know, not just our student athletes, but of our students in general at Lakota, to be involved, to give back to the community, to really represent their school, their families, with pride. And I think this group especially embodies that. I mean, you look at this group here, and beyond just the, you know, being involved in student government, NHS, heavy club schedules, you know, different sports, they do a lot within the classroom, too, and that goes, you know, way above and beyond what we asked for that, from them for, you know, five, six months of the year, too, to really put in the work on the field as well. So, you know, carrying a team average GPA of over 4.0, incredibly impressive. Yeah. And I know, you know, our job as a coaching staff is to not just, you know, put up results and put up wins, and as many of you sitting here tonight, you know, you're here because you care about the kids, and you're here because, you know, beyond just the classroom, you know, you care about what they're going to be doing in life, you know, five, 10 years from now. And so, that's kind of our mentality as a coaching staff, is yes, we're, you know, we're obviously hired to win games, in that sense, but for us, we coach because we want to see them excel and succeed way beyond the soccer field. And so, they did both this year. You know, they had the opportunity to win a state championship, which we have to remind ourselves, I have to remind them, like, that is not easy to do. So that is a huge accomplishment in and of itself, to really understand you are the final team in the state to win your season, to win your last game. And, but beyond that, you know, we're so proud of what they've accomplished, and we're excited to see what our nine seniors do, but beyond that, see what this team, you know, the legacy they kind of leave as it trickles down now into remaining years of this program and in this district. So, just as the '99 team kind of set a precedent, you know, we're looking forward to the 2019 team being that next, you know, precedent, and that mile marker for these fifth, sixth graders as they come up, and they have role models to look up to, and they get to see, you know, what they accomplished. So, on behalf of myself and the staff, that's kind of what I want to talk about on the season. You know, we can talk records and goals and all that, but I think the really important part is sitting right in front of you, and that's these ladies. So, again, thank you on behalf of myself and the staff and these girls, for all the support you guys have given us from day one, so. I get the duty of introducing here. We will start with our coaching staff that's here tonight. We've got Alexis Dixon, come on up. Alex joined us this year as one of our assistant coaches, so former alumni as well, so that was wonderful to have her. Next, we have John Vogt, our, one of our assistant coaches and head JV coach. All right, we'll start with players here. We've got Emily Dorman. There she is. There we go. Next up, Maddie Prohaska. Cindy Jones. Cameron Bros. Jenna Satarsky. Maya Martier. Tori Kelly. Claudia Gibson. Amanda Behrens. Brooke Brockman. Madison Zohn could not be here tonight, so Bella Gallo. Savannah Grubbs. Kalen Dudukovich. Katie Saylor. Vanessa Menchoffer. And Gabby Bame could not be here, so we've got Gracie West. Emily Pay. Jessica Jackson. Jules Harrell, you don't have to dress out.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll see you back here next year, so.
Yeah, no pressure.
How much longer?
About weeks in the booth.
Good luck with all of that.
What impresses me most about soccer is that they're literally running for 40 minutes.
The endurance.
Yeah. It's amazing.
Sorry, may I have you allowed back here, but thank you.
You are. You're allowed back here. You're welcome.
Thanks, Bridget, you can take my seat.
I was going to say. We give Bridget our chairs.
We'll give everyone a moment to scoot out. We said right before finals, and we appreciate everybody coming out.
Here goes all of our fans.
Betsy, get a picture of that before they all leave.
For nine seniors, it's their last set of finals, because you don't necessarily have to take them the last semester.
Oh, in the spring, that's right. That was lovely. Big fan base, too.
Pardon?
We can just end now.
To what?
Big fan base, too.
Right.
I didn't see anybody that signed in. Usually, they bring it forward to me if somebody has.
Yeah. That's the craziest thing I've ever heard.
All right.
Ratsister Ma.
This is our first opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to address the board with anything pertaining to what's on the agenda this evening, they may do so at this time. All right, see no one, we'll move to board reports. Board Policy Committee, we have first reads.
Mr. Rogelmann's going to be coming up.
He always gets the fun job.
Well, try and make this as brief as possible. We had a meeting November 15th with our Neola representative to go over the August update that took place. We reviewed numerous policies, and before you tonight, you have 13 policies for first read. Twelve of those policies were through the Neola update, and one policy is a Lakota revision. One thing that I let the board know is through Board Docs now, all of Neola's updates are completely electronic. There's no more of the white box full of all of the updates and legal notices, it's completely paperless now. And so, if you wanted to go back to Board Docs, the electronic copies go all the way back to August of 2016. So that gives you some timeframe if you wanted to go back and take a look at those updates. Why, I don't know, but they are there if you were wanting to look at those. And also, our next update, just FYI, will be coming up in January, February. More expected guidance on the graduation pathways should be coming forward, so we'll probably have a pretty quick turnaround on some updates because of that. So, the policies before you, the first policy that Lakota has prompted is Policy 1415. That's just making sure that we're clear in our language on district years of service, not cumulative years of service, just making sure that when people retire, they understand that there is a difference if they have come from another district, that we talk about the district years of service. Then, policies in the 1000s. Employment of the treasure just aligns with the current House Bill 291, reflects current Ohio law. Policy 1615 is a new one that Neola developed, use of tobacco by administrators. We currently have that policy for professional class, classified staff, students, and visitors, but we've never had one for administrators. So, they just basically cut and paste that same policy and made it available for administrators to reflect those, that update. Policy 2431, athletics, this goes with the new provision for OHSAA student eligibility with the waiver as it deals with, I'm sorry, that's, yes, for the waiver as it deals with what they call show choir, as now being possible to be for the PE waiver. What we need to do on our end, then, is to help students understand which course would classify as that show choir, just not any choir qualifies, has to be a show choir. So we'll work with our students, let them know which ones then meet that need. Interscholastic athletics, also talk about a new eligibility rule. Some schools were caught giving students incompletes because they knew they were failing as a chance for them to get their grades up, then to become eligible, but this kind of fixes that to say if there is a sign-off that there is a true incomplete, then eligibility can ensue later. School choice revisions, which is Policy 511302, just the changes of some of the school improvement language under ESSA compliance, this now reflects the state law. Policy 5200, the attendance revision, this is part of provisions of House Bill 66. This is the 120-minute rule, whereas we need to notify parents within 120 minutes of the start of school whether their child is absent. And so that will keep us with current statute to have that in place. Policy 5350, student mental health, this is the training requirements that have been modified by House Bill 502, helps us reflect current state law. Graduation requirements, which will also be the focus of the next January, February update, this goes into that physical education PE waiver requirement. Policy 7300, disposition of real property, this is where we used to have the rule that if you had an unused school facility, you could hold it for two years, now they've reduced it to one. So if we have a facility that's not unused for one year, then that is able to be put up for auction, and that reflects the current state law. Policy 744003, I think we were kind of ahead of the curve on this one, this deals basically with the use of drones. Well, we've created a policy three years ago through the help of a legal counsel, which is our current policy 7441. So what we'll do with this policy, this will replace 7441, it lines up exactly what we say about the use of drones on school property. Then, Policy 8462, student abuse and neglect, this is part of the training requirements, House Bill 502, helps us reflect current law as well. And then finally, Policy 8500, food services, this deals with House Bill 166 regarding school breakfast program, it changes the term lunch now, it should include breakfast, so everywhere you see lunch now says meal. So, those are all of the wonderful updates with policy. Any questions or concerns?
Nope. Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob, for the update.
Anything else with policy? Community engagement? We've had two community engagement meetings. We had one on school finances, where Jenny did an update. She did a presentation talking about where we were with our five-year forecast, our revenues, our expenses, where the growth was. We then did discussions at each of our tables, talking about what people would like to see, what their thoughts were. It was interesting to see the disparity of where people were and what their thoughts were on that topic. Again, those notes are being typed up, I don't believe they've been posted yet, but they will be, of what people wanted to see done with funds. I believe all four of us were present. And then, we also had a community conversation with our freshmen at the freshman building at West, because we did the east freshman last year. Kelly.
I think we've done freshmen before, this was, I think, the first one. Jeff said that we've done with freshmen. I thought that's what he said.
So, Kelly, Linda and I were present at that. We asked, what beyond the straight academics do you feel like you need to succeed in the future, as well as what makes your favorite teacher your favorite teacher? What qualities do they possess? What would you like to see more of within the classroom? And so that was interesting learning that we got from our freshman students over at West. And so it was a quick one-hour conversation with our students, because they did it during one of the blocks of their lunch period. So it was a little more of a sprint, sprint course than some of our community conversations were. So, it was good to hear that feedback. Our next community conversation will be on school culture and what we want to see. I don't have the date off the top of mind, but you can look on the website, it's the first week in January.
January.
First week in January.
And that's what I have for the community.
Grandparents, one also in January.
Yes.
Grandparents that are raised, I think that's like the 14th or something.
Yeah.
But they're both on the website.
Yep.
So.
We had a coffee chat also, that, we had a nice mix of people that are regular attenders, attendees, and some new faces, so that was good to see as well.
Absolutely, yeah, that was one of the better-attended community coffees we've had for a while.
Especially for being at eight o'clock.
Right.
I mean, that was a, there was like 15 or 16 people there.
Any other items?
I think so.
All right, moving on to Butler Tech. From last month's meeting, it seems like a long time ago now, there is the student success for everybody. And we'll be meeting on next Tuesday. In our last meeting, we did an update on our strategic plan, tremendous amount of data. Being used to correlate, whether or not the strategic plan is being followed, it's, they're doing a great job with it. And we will have our final meeting of the year next Tuesday. And also have our board development meeting prior to that meeting. Anything else on Butler Tech? That's it for now. All right. Legislative Committee? Matt, Jenny?
You want to go first?
You go ahead.
A lot of discussion about Ed Choice vouchers that we'll get to a little bit later tonight, the alliance that we're a member of, I have a call-in with them on Wednesday. Next week, there's a BASA legislative meeting on Tuesday that I should be at, and then also tied into that, part of State Superintendent Paula Di Maria's advisory, superintendent advisory team, we're going to be talking that in Report Card. So it's going to be a flurry of activity on the legislative side, Monday and Tuesday of next week.
Holidays are putting a damper on really everything. Testimony on House Bill 305, which is the school, new way to fund schools, we're probably not going to be testifying anymore until after the first of the year on that, so holidays are kind of slowing things down. But hopefully, it's not going to slow things down too much when we talk about Ed Choice. Hopefully, there's still some people listening on that front, so.
Kelly.
We're going to talk about Ed Choice later, but I am going to pass this out. I'm sure we all got this email, but I just kind of collated it for you. OSBA and BASA and Jenny's organization have gotten together and tried to come up with different solutions for Ed Choice to the legislature, so they're asking us to contact our representatives and the governor's office to let them know that some of the provisions that they want to put in there, how important those are to us. So, there's also some talking points to help the community understand better. So I just kind of put it together for you. I'm sure we got the email, but it's talking points, it's who to contact, and it's which of our schools are on there.
Do we have seven copies?
I do not have seven copies, because I figured Matt and Jenny had their own talking points.
I do.
So, don't give Matt and Jenny one.
If we could send that out electronically?
I can send that out electronically as well, yes, I can put it on Board Docs also.
I think it was part of an email, too, that everybody received.
It was, it was part of an email that we all got today, I think.
I have some notes on that that I'll reference later, that are, that sort of Lakota eyes at for us.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I wasn't leaving you out, I just really forgot to make seven copies.
I got mine.
No worries.
It was the copy machine and I were not getting along.
Anything else? Just the final piece, we've not had a chance to get together and set a date yet, but we're planning a Columbus visit, so hopefully before the end of the year.
Before the end of the year? Merry Christmas.
Soon.
I was like, happy holiday.
I said that optimistically. Got a question on, with our local township officials, have we had any update on the Village North development, or has there been any movement, or any, have we gotten any correspondence on that?
I have not, have you?
No, the only time I've heard from anybody representing Village North was when they came to a board meeting, I haven't had anything else.
Me either. The last I heard from Liberty Township was there were some changes in the way the initial deal was supposed to be coming forward, and so, but we haven't gotten anything. We haven't heard anything since that meeting they came to? When they came to talk to us? Nothing, other than just some communication with Liberty Township, but nothing with the developer. Okay. No. I don't have any update.
That's it for Legislative. All right, thank you. Facilities?
No updates.
All right.
I met with Fire Pete and Kuzman today about some opportunities, they're going to provide some CPR training for some of our students. In fact, too many students signed up, so they're triaging that as we speak, and just some future opportunities for our kids in terms of internship, so we had that conversation today, so.
Any movement on our vacancies in the SRO arena?
Not yet, but I'm trying really hard. We have some, for those of you that don't know, we have some SROs that have had, either retired, or stepped away, or doing other jobs, and some of those vacancies have not been filled yet, so they're trying to piecemeal it, but it's been, it's been a while, it's been quite a long time, so.
Are they a mixture between Westchester and Liberty, or all?
It's mostly Butler County Sheriff.
It's mostly Butler County. Would we be able to work, I mean, I know they want to hire the best person, obviously, that is first and foremost, but obviously, we want to try to get somebody in there as well. Have we put any type of deadline, or trying to force a deadline? Is that a thing?
It's not really a thing, but the conversations are increasing, and you can't just, as everyone knows, or the board knows, you can't put a, just a regular street cop in that school setting, and there's some coverage that we are doing, and trying to get better at, but it's heightening its awareness.
Maybe it's more of a conversation around us being aware of a soft deadline that the Butler County Sheriff's Office has placed on themselves to get somebody in the role, so we can kind of track the progress of getting those backfilled.
I'll try to get some info from them and get to you in an update.
Light a fire under them.
Yep. They have some personnel issues, and people getting pulled off, and someone got hurt, and so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we worked really hard to get that push-through, so that we could get those, that staffing in those buildings.
And working with them.
Yeah.
To make that happen.
So I think that just seeing that same type of energy on the other end, trying to get those pre-filled would be great. And maybe they are, but it's been radio silence, so it'd be great to.
Right, it's been a while.
All right. Set date and time of our organizational meeting, our next meeting would be our organizational meeting, it has to happen prior to January 15th, so.
Are we doing a separate meeting, a separate org meeting?
We can do it either way. We've done it both ways historically, sometimes we do it the same day as a regular meeting, some days we do it differently. We can also, again, historically, we've done meetings the second and fourth Monday, we can not do meetings the second and fourth Monday, that whole calendar is set at the organizational meeting, so there's no, that has been Lakota's plan, but that doesn't mean that has to be Lakota's plan, you know, it can, we could switch our meetings to.
Oh my gosh, that'll confuse me.
Tuesdays, Wednes, you know, it. It would confuse our community as well. Right, so, there's no set requirement, we set all that at the organizational meeting. So, when I first joined the board, we always did it the first Monday in January, recently, we've done it the second Monday in January. I'm open to discussion, whatever the will of the board is, of which way people would like to do it.
That's the sixth, the first Monday.
Mm-hmm, some have a preference to do it as soon as possible, so that there is new leadership in place, it's up to the will of the board as to what you would like to do.
So if we did it on the sixth, and we kept our meetings the second and the fourth, that would be like the sixth, and the first meeting would be the 13th, is that correct?
Okay, so if we do the sixth, I need to be gone on the 13th. If we keep it before the meeting on the 13th, I can be gone on the sixth, I do have a trip I have to make, I can't do both.
So you can't do both, yeah.
So you'd prefer to have it all in one night?
I would prefer to do it like we've done it in the past, just before the first regular meeting.
I have no preference. We're going to do it together, the only preference I would think is if we're going to do it together, if we could do the second and fourth, unless we are, unless there's a majority that wants to change those dates, I would prefer we keep our meetings the second and the fourth, just for ease of.
Okay, so.
My calendar.
I'm hearing the 13th and the 27th, or tentatively in January, so we'll do the org meeting on the 13th. What time would we like to start the organizational meeting? Forget if we started at. We started at five or five-thirty last year.
Either one's fine with me.
I have no preference.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Can I jump in for a second? Melissa Fink took the liberty of scheduling out what, what it would, what a calendar may look like for this coming year. So I'm just going to pass this around the table. If you want to take a look at it for the meeting, just to sort of prep ourselves. She took into consideration Capitol Conference and other dates that we usually try to work around. So this is just a template for you to take a look at as we prepare for next year.
Thank you.
And should we plan on, I think Betsy had mentioned, mentioned doing.
Oh yeah, new pictures. New pictures.
Should we plan on doing that prior to that five-thirty start? So really a five-fifteen start? Five-ten, five oh five?
Five o'clock. Do I hear five o'clock?
Just want to make sure it's in my calendar.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Let's do five o'clock, just because it might take a while to get a good picture.
Just to recap that, then the organizational meeting starts at.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
So that's when people should come if they want to come to the meeting. They don't have to be here for the picture at five.
They can join the picture if they'd like.
So five o'clock for pictures, Betsy?
Okay.
Do we really think it's going to take a half hour?
I was going to say, I don't think it'll take a half an hour.
Okay, well, I don't, it's, Betsy, what do you think? Okay.
Second?
Five fifteen. Thank you. Sorry, people, to take you through this housekeeping. Alright, so. We will arrive five fifteen, the thirteenth, the meeting will start at five thirty. Alright, onward. Administrative reports, Keith, program of studies.
And some Ed Choice.
And some other things. Good evening. At the previous meeting, I had shared with you a summary of changes to the program of studies. I'd hope to have that for you this evening. Share that with the teachers, the department chairs, and they asked for a few more days to hammer out the details of that, which I wanted to honor. They're busy prepping things for the end of the calendar year. So I'll have the program of studies to you electronically later this week. All of the changes that we highlighted before are in there. No other changes outside of wordsmithing are going on at this point in time. So we'll have those at that point in time. What I do want to make sure that I do is come back to you on a regular basis to give you sort of an update on, update on changes that we've got going on and progress we've got going on. We like to tie all of those things as much as possible to the strategic plan. Also gives us a context within which to talk about Ed Choice and any of those other comments that we've got. Again, when we talk, all of our work is driven by the strategic plan. We take that very seriously. The, the two main points at the beginning, that we are personalized and we are future-ready, fall directly under the curriculum team. And a lot of this work is the work that we've been doing throughout the course of this school year. When we talk about structures and systems, that was the original point of articulating. And with the help of Betsy's team, we have done a really great job of gathering video footage of personalized learning, what that looks like in classrooms, sharing that with all of our principals. And we've, our job is that second bullet point of improving those structures and systems to align our vision for personalized learning. We started with our principals. We have a personalized principalship class that we've started from last year, continued on to this year to make sure that all of them feel like they are confident in being instructional leaders. We've also had every single teacher in the district choose a pathway for their way of personalizing their learning for their students. And they've been practicing that throughout the course of this school year. We've gotten lots of really good feedback. That's provided a lot of the footage for Betsy and her team for the videos that they've come up with. We've also implemented weekly virtual meetings with each of our principal groups at all of our grade band levels. So that there's no miscommunication between central office and our principals. We give them a chance to give us feedback from what's going on in classrooms. And it also allows us to be able to share information with them as quickly as possible. It's allowed us to be a lot more agile in all of our work that we go, go through on the course of the school year. We've also implemented our team being in classrooms every Wednesday. So our team meetings happen within school buildings. And we are in classrooms every Wednesday, which is fantastic for us to calibrate a lot of the work that we're doing, to be able to measure all the personalized learning that we're trying to implement across the district. We've also had a number of pilots of personalized learning across the district. The Career Readiness Academy, now named the Academy, is one of our beacons for that. They do a great job with that for our students who might be credit deficient or needed a different context for school. We piloted the Link Lab and the Humanities Lab at East and West freshman schools this year. Those are teachers working collaboratively, co-teaching their, their subject areas together. We've got a lot of really good feedback on that from the students, from the teachers, and also on the amount of work that they've been able to accomplish in that, in that setting. We also currently have four PBL teams at, project-based learning teams, I apologize, at the elementary schools and one at the junior high school. And we'll have four more coming out next year where those are ways for them to personalize learning for those students, be able to provide those, also a future-ready sort of learning experience. And the bottom point there is that we've been going through a year-long redesign of what our multi-tiered systems of support look like for all of our students. And how do we get better at using the data that we've got to address the learning needs of every single student out there? So those are just some of the systems that we've been able to build throughout the course of this school year to help us personalize our learning for our students. So it's not just a tagline on a strategic plan. We also want to make sure that we measure that as much as possible. Some of that is student test scores and some of that is external audit data. And so we've worked with an organization called Ed Elements over the past eighteen months. And they have helped us, they have a score or sort of a, a, sort of a credit rating idea, how to measure your progress. And so they've come to us and said, they'll survey all of our teachers. And typically in year one of an implementation, which would have been last year, you're typically in the mid-five hundreds of that score. Year two in the high six hundreds. And I just wanted to update us on how we're doing. This is our way to benchmark ourselves against the other hundreds of districts across the country that are also doing similar work that we are. And I'll remind you of what this looked like a year ago. So in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, it was only the high school. Our score was a five-twenty. You know, that circular dotted line, anything that's within, inside that circle are the places that we need to focus our attention. So all of our systems and support went to those places. So our support, strategic communication, thus driving the way that we're organized this school year. Spring of two thousand and nineteen, at the end of the school year, again, only the high school after a year of implementation, we saw that support and strategic communication grow. And we did fairly well. We thought we were doing well enough at that point to be able to go K-12 with that initiative. And we tested ourselves just about three weeks ago. And our fall two thousand, oh, fall two thousand and nineteen, sorry, missed that. That score is a seven-twenty-three, which is, as you can see on the, the dotted line on the left, is far above what they typically see for school districts who are going through this kind of transformational change. And all of our data on the right-hand side with schools who are just probably three or four months into this are above and beyond what we would expect to see. That doesn't mean that we stop what we're doing. But our work at setting up systems and support and communicating an innovative system for students, we are on the right track. There are obviously things we need to work on, but that's our point to tell us we're on the right track moving forward. So that's all the systems and support around personalized learning. We also talked about something we wanted to create was a portrait of a Lakota graduate. We launched that this year. We trained all of our principals in what that looks like. We had them find ways that they, what that looks like in their classrooms, how they support that within all of their evaluations with teachers, the programs they've got. At, in November, we worked with all of our teachers across the district and having them find ways that they can implement that kind of learning in their classrooms so that they can create the kinds of students that our business and our community partners have told us are important. We've also embedded those within curriculum. So we are redesign, we're always updating our curriculum. And so as we go through that, we're looking at how do we embed those portrait of graduate skills within each of those lessons or units as we, as we rebuild curriculum on a continuous basis. And the last part is that, is that ongoing assessment. We're piloting this year in sixth and eighth grade, like student-led conferences or student reflection. So they're reporting those back specific to those skills. We'll also be building that into a twelfth-grade capstone, into those four E pathways we had talked about earlier. And we'll be implementing a graduate survey with all of our students that's directly tied to the portrait of a graduate to make sure that we're getting real-time feedback about, about that work. So we're excited about that. We'll see more and more of that. I think it's one of those that you get more comfortable with that language and teachers naturally see those connections. Ultimately, we want the students to be able to talk that language also. This also is the context within which we talk about accountability. And so when we talk about things like Ed Choice or state report card or test scores or anything, there are a couple of different ways you can come at that. And one is from sort of a heavy-handed, centralized, mandated curriculum format. There are some school districts who choose to go, go for that. We choose to go at it from a personalized standpoint. We choose to empower our principals and empower our teachers, really understand the data that's in front of them and put systems in place to be able to be reactive and responsive to students rather than waiting for tests, test results to come back. So all those systems that we talked about before really help us design a plan that allows us to be responsive to student needs as much as possible. It also allows us to be sustainable. So it's not just when the administration changes or when a person, a principal comes out of a building, but it really allows systems to be built that are sustainable long-term. Our current challenges that we've got in terms of our accountability system, our achievement data, we're focused. We have building goals around pers, around performance index and what that looks like. And our, our, all of our pathways that we talked about, that our teachers are doing professional development on, are all about mastery of content and skills. So as they get better at, at personalizing their classrooms, they'll be able to meet the needs of every single one of the students in there. K-three literacy is what drives a lot of our, we'll talk about Ed Choice. K-three literacy is a, is a strange measure that the state developed to hold early childhood teachers accountable. It is a moving target a lot of times. It's about moving your off-track students and readers to on-track. And allows for small numbers in your data to be able to have a lot of significance. But we've done a lot of revised benchmarking and data meeting protocols that we've sent out to our teachers to really fine-tune what our, when we're looking at our fifteen percent, typically our readers who are not on track at that point, and really getting better at what those responsive interventions were, we have in place for them at that point in time, rather than simply setting them maybe in front of a computer screen to do an online reading program or something like that. So we're excited about that. Our first data from those responsive systems comes back in January. So we're excited to see what that looks like and how our benchmarking meetings go after that. I can come back with more information as we get closer to that. The last is the Prepared for Success measure at the high schools. Unfortunately, the Prepared for Success measure does not look at a lot of real-world learning and internships and being future-ready like we've talked about. But it is heavily tied to having an ATC, ACT score that is remediation-free. And all of our work, all, obviously goes towards that. It also talks about the honors diploma and some of our industry credentials. And we're incorporating more of those through our own work and through the work with Butler Tech to hopefully be able to move the needle on that. We're very close on the grade that's, that's listed there. So those are all parts of our plan. We have focused teams that are working on specific areas that are low on report cards or whatever else. The one that has come up recently, and I'll leave, I'll let Mr. Miller fill us in a little bit more on the advocacy around the Ed Choice. It just unfortunately is a, is a measure and a way that we're looking at things that takes a small piece of data and paints a very broad picture that is not entirely accurate. And unfortunately, that's a system that we're in currently. And we're working with our principals to educate them and help them understand where we are. Happy to talk about that as we move forward. That's all that, what we do, why we do personalized learning is not necessarily for this, but it also gives us the ability to react to that. We are future-ready. We are not going to, we're not just about test scores. We're not just about reports back to the state of Ohio. We have bigger, bigger plans than that. We have a lot of work that we're doing around this. Excited to be able to work with Mr. Wesley and his team to design a system that really prepares our kids to be successful in their future. Sort of a real-world learning update. We're up over three hundred business partners now. We were at about twenty-five or thirty two years ago at this time. We're excited to be able to engage them in a lot of different ways. We've just wrapped up an engineering and tech day. We have those at both East and West now. A four E day where we bring in guest speakers to talk to kids about potential future careers. We've done luncheon learns at East and West. We have speaker series at both places. We're building a pretty robust, scaffolded plan for having kids understand better where they want to go when they graduate from here. As I talked about before, we have project-based learning teams, of those eight schools by next year, that are, it's not every day, all the time learning, but it is how do, how do they prepare kids to be able to work in teams effectively and solve big challenges that are in their world. The last piece of that is the four E pathways I talked about in the program of studies. How do we help kids understand all of the pieces from their core content to the electives they can choose, to the internship possibilities, to the in-school and out-of-school real-world experiences that lead to college majors and real-world careers? How do we help guide kids along that pathway and their journey? One of those pieces, every time that we roll out a new program, I want to keep you engaged. Our Cyber Academy continues to be very successful. We continue to gain regional and national interest. We had guests here from Union Public Schools in Oklahoma. So the superintendent heard about us and what was going on. He was at the, the National Bands Competition in Indianapolis and extended his stay and told his tech director he had to drive up here and see what was going on. Amazing. So that was really great. And then the, the Dayton Regional Chamber was here last week. And we said, so how'd you hear about this? And they said, well, John Huestead, the lieutenant governor, lives in our community and said, if you want to find out about cyber, you've got to go to Lakota. So we keep getting contacted by people about all the great work that we're doing, which is exciting. But our focus on the hundred and fifty-two students who are there and our thirty-five seniors who are in the cyber sprint class, excited for entering their spring semester of their senior year with an internship, hopefully, sitting there at the end of the year for them. They've all started working with our business mentors to find out what that looks like. We've also had some teams engage in the Cyber Patriot competition. So for a class that's three months old, for our kids, we had one group finish third in the state of Ohio. We had four or five others in the top twenty in the state of Ohio, which was just fantastic. We're just really excited to see them competing at that level. So the Cyber Academy's going well, and we're really excited to be able to kick off our business program this week. We have two redesigned business courses. One will focus on personal finance and one will talk about business application and design. Those will all lead up to, we have a culminating event in the incubator EDU at Lakota. So it's an entrepreneurship program. Kids will be in teams with a mentor and a coach and subject matter experts. And they will find a challenge, create a solution for that, test a minimally viable product. They will get some seed funding. They will prototype that. They will go to pitch night for real money to seed their business and hopefully come back their senior year and run that business. We're excited about our parent information night, Thursday night at Miami VOA. We've got a panel discussion with some local entrepreneurs who are there. We're also excited about the enterprise consulting. The, one of our board members on our business program is a professor in the Institute for Entrepreneurship at Miami. And they have volunteered, one of their student teams, their scene, group of four seniors, to be a consultant for Lakota local schools in whatever format that we want around entrepreneurship. So how might we design a local incubator space here in the community for our students and our local business leaders? So anytime we build out these kind of programs, we're contacted by people from the outside who just want to be a part and support our kids in what we're doing. And at the end of the day, we are all in this together. The way that we do this work is through partnerships with kids and teachers and principals and our business partners. And we can't do that alone. So we're excited to be able to build out those things. And I am happy to answer any questions or dig any further. And Mr. Miller, if you want to jump into any Ed Choice conversation here or separately, happy to help out with that.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do Ed Choice after we talk maybe about some of the things that are up there.
Sure.
And then you can jump in on, on anything that I missed.
Happy to. Questions?
Love all you're doing with that incubator class. Sounds great. And the cyber class. Question for me, I'll start with the Ed Elements. You mentioned that you spoke with staff and did some surveys with the Ed Elements work. Did you also do any surveying of students on where we are with all of that? Or is that part of the process?
That is part of the process, but we wanted to start with the teachers so they felt like they had a voice before going to the students to be able to, so that they felt comfortable in that kind of environment. But we also did a, we piloted a student survey probably six weeks ago or so called the Youth Truth Survey. And that aligns really closely with what we're doing in personalized learning. And so we were able to take that information and we'll be able to meet with their representatives, I think, and say, is that something that partners up with that? But I think we need to have a pretty comprehensive plan going forward of how we're constantly tapping into teacher voice and student voice to make sure we know where we're going. So more to come on that, I think.
You shared with us one area that, with the teacher's voice there. Were there other areas that teachers weighed in on that Ed Elements information? Or was that the only area?
So those, they also have, there's raw data in there and comments and all those kind of things that we dig into. And I forgot to mention that each of the buildings gets their own report. And so we are setting up one-on-ones with each of those principals to kind of dig into that data with them, to help them understand it. And the, some of those comments will also be more impactful for them than they would be on the, in the macro. Does that, does that answer your question? Okay, thanks.
Keith, I was wondering if there's any, and I know this is a slippery slope, but is, is there any discussion or any plan around trying to get the kids, I mean, we have a ton of internships that they just go unfilled. And then you have, I mean, when we were sitting at the community conversation, there was, I had Katie at my table. There were kids that were like, oh, I would have loved to have done this. Well, I'd like to do something like this. And she was like, well, we have an internship for that. Or, you know, and I know it's a, it's a struggle because, you know, we. Or, you know, and I know it's a, it's a struggle because, you know, we take to the hack, we take it to the counselors and everybody is super busy. But there's so many opportunities out there that I feel like we're not, kids aren't doing.
Well, and I think that we've used, like you said, we've, we've tried all those things and we've had marginal success with all of them. I think at the end of the day, it comes down to having somebody who is the advocate for that in the building. Whether it's a teacher or a group of teachers or department chairs who are grabbing the right kids, especially those who might not even consider that as an option, and just constantly pushing, pushing on that and pushing it out there. Honestly, it's been one of our a-haz that we thought that more kids would just naturally dive for those. I think they've got to see how it makes sense to, kids are busy too.
Right, that's true.
We've got to be able to make that justification that if you're going to take time away from this, what you're already doing, be able to dedicate it to this, it's got to be meaningful. But it's not an easy decision.
No, it's not.
Kids are busy and, and they've got a limited amount of time. And I think the more that they see that as meaningful, that's really important because we do hear kids say like, school's important and I've got to make sure I study and I got to make sure I just don't have any other time in my day. So, and it's also listening to the students and not, that's why the community conversation at, at West Freshman is so important to be able to say, what is it that's, that's holding you back from that?
And some of their, to that point, some of the conversation at my table was around how much they love the personalized learning in the classroom, how much they love being able to decide how they learn as opposed, when we asked them, in my group anyway, when we said, you know, what teacher is helping you succeed outside the classroom and why do you like that? It was, all goes back to the teachers that are doing the personalized learning.
And that's been our impact also, or our feedback also, is the kids just, they see the, the kids who come into the classroom really excelling and wanting to go farther, they're able to. And the kids who feel like they need extra time, extra support are able to get that all in the same space, which is great.
They love that. So thanks for that, all that hard work on that.
And I think the word's starting to trickle out. I think it's going to be trickling down to lower grade levels, and I think it's coming.
I think so too. I think with any new program, it just takes some time. It just, you see all these great opportunities that, you know, kids aren't taking advantage of and are saying, oh, I wish I had known that.
Right. We're supposed to keep preaching.
Right. How many places do you need to have it?
Right.
So following up on Kelly's question, are we proactively pushing that information out to students or do they need to go searching for it?
We push it out. We push it out in several, you know, through social media, through announcements, through targeted teachers, through the counselors. We have a, two student groups who have designed sort of a communication strategy around that. I think we're getting inroads. We just haven't gotten to where we want to be.
I'm hearing what Kelly is, which is, I wish I'd known about that. Perhaps we could employ our Spark students to write something for us and help us to get that word out there.
Oh, we just happen to have a few of them here.
I'm sure they would love to do that.
Actually, I think they did. Didn't they do one? I think they did an article. They did an article. Spark did.
Maybe we need to do more.
I don't have any questions, but I just appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the bridge that you've created between the portrait of graduate and the work that we're doing with the experiences and the state report card. And there's that real tension that exists between the two of them, but we can't ignore either of them. But we know where we need to be driving and forcing more. So I appreciate you kind of showing, you know, these are the things that we're doing and these are the things we have to be intentional about, and they will start to change the metrics on the report card if we are, if we remain intentional. So thank you for that.
And then this day we'll change the metrics and we'll be.
Well, that's, that's a given.
Anything else?
Good. I'll make comments about Ed Choice if I can. Don't leave in case I need backup. The Ed Choice voucher program, the school voucher program, essentially, not essentially, it does provide public tax dollars to pay tuition for students attending private schools. And so I'm okay with school choice, but I'm not okay with public tax dollars going to parochial schools or private schools. It started out as a, as a a way to provide alternative Ed choice for students whose public school was considered to be failing. But if you look at the schools that are on the Ed Choice voucher program list now, almost half, over 47% or 48% are schools that are receiving an A, B, or C right now rating. So it's one of those things that I don't think coincides. Last year, we had 300 school buildings in the state of Ohio that were deemed eligible for vouchers. That number has increased 300% in two years to 1,200 schools. And the Ed Choice vouchers, as I think most people know, there's two parts to that. One is federal poverty guideline. If you're 200% below the federal poverty guideline, the state pays for that voucher. However, if the school district pays, if you're a failing school listed by the state, if you qualify for both, you're 200% below the poverty line and you're in a failing school, the school district picks up that cost. So for an elementary student, that's about $4,600 per student. I think it's a little bit more than that, 4,650, thank you. In high school, it's $6,000 per student. So that's local property tax dollars funding district-paid vouchers. We have a lot of students who have never enrolled here that go to parochial, and again, about choice, that are already attending a private school that would then be able to qualify for district-paid vouchers. We would have to pay that cost. And then once you obtain that voucher, if you live in Lakota schools, and let's say you're in first grade and you're one of those schools that's been identified, and the district loses money because you're going to go to a parochial school as part of this program, and six months later you move to another school district, say Fairfield or Mason, the brunt of that cost sticks with Lakota. So they could go all the way through, say, grade two through 12 in a neighboring district, and it's still going to fall back on us because when they made that switch, they lived here in Lakota. So if you do the math on that, you're talking about $65,000 per student. If you look at the research from the Fordham Foundation, from the Ohio Department of Education, voucher students in private schools perform worse than their public counterparts in reading and math. And that's using, that's their data, not ours. The other thing that I thought was interesting when we met with our state legislators, that private school students, as everybody knows, can pick and choose the students that come to them. We were told by state legislators, it's because public schools do better with those students, meaning students on IEPs or special needs students, which, again, school choice, opportunities, options are fine, but we're not comparing apples to apples when you're being able to pick and choose what students you get. We don't have that choice. Also tied into all this are the metrics around testing, and they don't have the same guidelines on testing that we do at Lakota. I say all this knowing that we don't have too many students right now that partake in the voucher system, but that door could be open more and more. Interestingly enough, today around 2:30, there was an email that went out for a media release from the Ohio Department of Education, from the State Board of Education and the State Superintendent that Mr. Coney forwarded to me that I think a lot of the administrators in the district receive, that the State Board of Education and the State Superintendent announced the annual Ohio School Performance Awards for school districts. And so these are things that should be celebrated. And so when I look at the list and I'm crosswalking everything that was listed, we have some good news to share. So we have some good news about our district, about some of our schools in our district. So they acknowledged the, on the report card, all A schools or overall A schools, and there were 50 in the state of Ohio. 50 out of literally thousands. Of those 50, two are ours, Heritage Elementary and Liberty Elementary. Overall, A schools in the state, there are only 209 schools that were recognized. In the, of those 209, we have two of those as well, Wyandotte, and I believe the other one, yep, is Creekside. So congratulations to those schools. Then the state of Ohio gives something out called a Momentum Award. And so there are only 48 school districts in the state of Ohio that received the Momentum Award. One of the 48 is Lakota for the fourth year in a row. There were only one, two, three, four, five school districts in the state of Ohio that have won that, received that Momentum Award, and we are one of the five. And then the Momentum Schools, which I thought was interesting, these are schools that receive the Momentum Award. There are 173 schools. Again, out of literally thousands in the state of Ohio, and we have five of those schools here, Endeavor, Freedom, Independence, and East and West High. So I say all that saying that one of our seven failing schools is on the Momentum list. And that's Endeavor. So apparently we are failing with momentum. I don't know how else to say it, but it goes to the lunacy of where we are with the state report card, where we are with failing schools. And I get the original intent, but that's not what's happened. It's not what's happened at all. And I'll put any of our schools, any of the 23, much less the seven that are failing up against anybody else, is public schools in the state of Ohio. Do we have things to work on? Absolutely. So does 613 other schools. But I can't understand how we got to this point without making adjustments in the voucher laws. And I also don't understand the timing of ODE and the State Superintendent giving us accolades and, and awards today when one of those schools that received the award is failing. As somebody in this room eloquently said to me, when frustration level might have gotten really high today, as it's going to keep getting high because I can't find what I was going to say. Oh, I got it. No, I don't. Yes, I do. So frustration level gets high. Comment was quote-unquote, "I say it's best to ignore it all and keep doing great work for students," which is what we saw here presented today. So it's not to say that we don't want to hold our schools or our teachers or our kids accountable. We do, but it needs to be more of a common sense approach. Comments, questions, suggestions, 15 things I'm forgetting. Nope, I got it.
Yeah, I think that was really well said, and I think that our community should be outraged. So either our legislators fell asleep at the wheel or they're intentionally trying to privatize public education. There's two options there, and I think that we know which way it's going. And so we have to be on our state legislators. We have to be writing them. We have to be telling them that this practice is unfair, and everything that you laid out is exactly it. I don't think any of us are opposed to choice.
No.
Choice is important for population of students and for families.
But when you start looking about how it's getting public education, it's not right. And so I know from my perspective, I'm one, one voice up here and I don't represent the other voices, but, you know, we have got to stand strong and our community has to step up and say, this isn't right.
And the changes this year, these are students who have never
That's right.
attended our public schools. It's one thing if we want to say our, our schools have failed them and now we're going to give you a scholarship to go elsewhere. These students have never been in our classrooms, and now they're eligible for scholarships to go to the private schools. The other thing that's a double whammy is we're all on a guarantee this year. So there's no additional dollars coming in. These are deductions that are leaving us and going out. And Matt said, for us, we've got four this year, but there are some districts in this county that this is, this is detrimental.
Be devastating.
It'll gut the system.
Yeah, it will.
Of some school districts.
Yeah.
Well, and in the past, we've always been able to say local levy dollars stayed local. And now with this, when it's, the scholarships are greater than what the state share is, you can't necessarily say that when this starts to happen.
And this is zero. So the state dollars are, there's not even a pass-through right now. These are local dollars going to private school.
There, there are some, some school districts that all have to pass levies because of this.
Immediately.
Well, and there are some school districts too, that their scores are so high, they can't make growth. And because they can't make that growth because they're at 99%, they're a failing school.
And look, let me.
Well, when you look at this, Mason has some, Indian Hill has some. I mean, we're not talking about just urban districts. It's across the board.
And this is probably a bad comparison. Maybe I shouldn't say it, but I'm going to anyway. Those of us that are old remember a time when proficiency testing was really the rage. And if you were on an IEP, you were exempt. And so we saw an uptick in students qualifying for IEPs. Correlation? Don't know. But when Mr. Coney's talking about the K three diagnostic test and that can differ district by district, and you started to play that game, I just wonder what that looks like. I mean, do we want to not have this mess so we're going to tweak how districts test kids? I mean, that's what's going to happen in some districts across the state, just going to. I mean, we saw it before. So again, bad comparison, but what's new is older, old is new, or something like that.
Jenny, did I read somewhere or hear somewhere that the per pupil dollars, if you go to a private school, let's say that the per pupil dollars is $4,500 and you go to a private school that's only charges $3,000, that they still get the balance of that? Because somebody said that, and I didn't think that was right.
No, that's up to, it's up to that amount. So, no.
Okay, I didn't think that was right. I was like, oh, that doesn't sound right. I think that's why it's important to write those legislators on that list, because there's a short window where this decision's going to be made before the break. That's two weeks away. I mean, that's a really short window.
I've, I've seen all, our local legislators, or I've talked to them on the phone, so from that standpoint.
Are they understanding the challenges of this?
I don't think I was their first call, and I don't think I'll be their last, so I'm hoping yes.
I read something that Peggy Lainer was basically saying. I mean, she understood it and something she wrote and said that I think the top performing school in the state was on the list.
They are. Someone I think was listed. Yeah.
Crazy.
I don't think you mentioned this, but I think it's important for the community to know too, that this was actually added to the budget bill and didn't actually go through the legislative process.
At the last minute.
That's correct. It was.
So it was at the last minute, added into the budget bill so that it could get passed. That's why there's a lot of momentum on the back end, trying to get things changed because it was snuck in there.
And I think that might have been.
Trying to figure out how to make it happen.
Part of a leftover bill that kind of fizzled out and they put some of it in, I think might have been Matt Hoffman from Lima, if I remember right. Was the rep.
I have a couple of questions.
I'll try to answer them.
I appreciate that, Matt. I, congratulations on the awards for what.
Big news.
Those are for. Maybe you could clarify for everyone what the Momentum Award actually measures?
I can't if you give me just a second to pull that up. And again, this is off, hot off the presses and fresh. Value-added. Thank you. Value-added for schools.
In all subgroups.
So I appreciate the comments that were made tonight. I do think that we perhaps should get our legislative team together this week if we can and talk about any steps or a formal letter we might send, or even connecting with other districts impacted by it and sending a letter together.
Actually, superintendents, treasurers, and in this case, I'll say more importantly, PR teams from school districts in our area and region have been meeting as late as today at, at our central office. So Betsy and Lauren and folks from around the state are compiling things and putting out a consistent message. Not that we had different messages, but this is really important to obviously Lakota, but I think there's a bigger, bigger fish to fry in this.
That's why I'm suggesting a joint voice together, and I think there should be a board voice added to the process as well.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we've been working on.
So perhaps the board could be involved in that discussion.
Sure.
I do want to be sure that as we're looking at this, and you're saying we have seven failing schools in our district.
I'm not saying that the state of Ohio is. I'm not saying that. But I know what you're saying.
You have passed on the information to us that we have seven failing schools.
Correct.
And are we looking at value add as the way that that's being measured? And are we saying we don't have any concerns with that?
No, I said just a few minutes ago that we always have concerns about some of the metrics that we judge our students by and our kids, and our, and our teachers for that matter. But some of the subgroups that we're getting dinged on, it's one student off in some areas, and that's causing a school to be deemed as failing. It just doesn't make any sense.
And I understand what you're saying, but I also believe that student achievement is our core priority. That's what we're supposed to be doing. And I would like to understand those numbers better. When I look at our seventh and eighth grade value add, it's red all the way down the line. We know it's a three-year average. We know it's not going to stay in A. That's a concern.
Sure.
I think that maybe the board needs a better understanding of that. I also think our science scores could be much higher than they are in the elementary grades and including in seventh and eighth grade as well. So I would like to understand how we're addressing that. And I would like the board to have a better understanding of the numbers. Can we receive that?
Sure. I can resend that. Yeah.
I'd be happy to update you on plans we've got for all the seventh and eighth grade buildings.
I would appreciate that. I would think the rest of the board would too. So maybe we could do that at a board workshop coming up.
Sure.
My understanding, they get kicked in if it's achievement or growth now. It used to be an and, and now it's an or. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yeah.
The wording, yeah.
Yeah.
Which we celebrated the growth aspect from the district wide. I mean, obviously, there's individual buildings that we want to track and monitor, but we had talked about that when we did the report card presentation, right? We had a B in achievement, and then we had an A in growth, and really talking about that value-added component to the district and how we're growing our students. Again, there's always work to be done, and it would be great to do a deeper dive into some of the buildings and what we're doing, but I still think there's a, there's a huge disconnect between that report card and Ed Choice. And so I appreciate the conversation that we need to be having about our buildings, but I don't want to tie it to the Ed Choice conversation now, because I think there's a massive disconnect between the two.
And don't misconstrue that I believe the report card is a great accountability measure. It's not.
Yeah.
And we've talked about that several times, and I think we need to continue doing the work toward a more effective and efficient accountability measure, but nonetheless, that's still what we have at this point.
Mm-hmm.
And now it will impact us financially tremendously, or can.
Good, yep. You're right.
Matt, on, the thing that I pulled up today has eight schools.
It's eight, sorry.
Okay, I just, yeah, you keep saying seven, so I didn't know if I was missing one.
No.
Or apparently you're missing one.
Yeah.
Anything else on this topic?
Fun stuff.
Anyone else?
Stay tuned.
Do we know, I mean, the plan is for the legislative to take action prior to Christmas, or to the holiday break?
Yes, yes.
But there's no plan for any hearings or anything around it?
No.
I haven't heard anything about testimony or anything.
And that's why we need to get the momentum from our community and the boards to-
From the legis-
-write letters, do what they can do, to really push this to our legislators to, as I would personally say, wake up, have a conversation about it.
I'm hearing the next 48 hours are crucial. That's what I keep hearing.
That's what I heard as well.
The next 48 hours are crucial.
I know Hamilton had community meetings with their community already, and-
It's heavy.
And have we planned anything like that?
Um, I mean, not since we only have the four right now.
I was going to say, I don't know if there's time.
Yeah.
All right. With that, we'll move to Treasurers' recommendations. We have item A, approval of board minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Jenny, please call the roll.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving to superintendents' recommendations, we have adoption of the resolution to enter the ELP program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a couple of questions. I noticed the resolution on here does not match the one that we saw in the workshop, nor do the requirements outlined here match the requirements for the actual ELP program that we saw last week. Was it last week?
Yes.
What part doesn't match?
Um, well, the part about a ballot issue. I was told at the workshop that you had to do something within a year, or you had to start a new-
Right.
-contract.
Correct.
That's not what this says.
So the November 2020 is the only option within that one-year window for a ballot issue. So that's why that's-
That's why it's, yeah.
And also, it said that the, the district had to commit to passing a ballot issue. That's what was in the documentation from the state program itself.
I had that question as well.
Um, and I can tell you, I'm not going to support a levy or a bond issue with absolutely no plan, no idea of what we're going to spend, and $100 million in cash. That doesn't make any sense.
So the plan is part of the process, when we talked about it at the work session last time. It's part of the process, that, that OFCC-
And Mrs. O'Connor was correct last time, it's backwards.
So voting on the ELP doesn't automatically put a levy on the ballot, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
It just says that we're moving forward with the process.
It requires you to put something on the ballot with, to pass something within a year, or you have to start a new contract. And if you start a new contract, you lose credit for what you spent, like, over the summer. It starts over from zero.
We lose all credit if we don't do anything.
I was going to say, we lose, yeah, we lose all the credit if we don't do anything.
So first of all, I want to say that the resolution is the resolution that the state has on their, it's their sample with, it's filled in. So the resolution that you saw at the work session was just the, it's the sample from the state. So it has our information in there, and it, it does require, the state does require us to say that when we would go for either a ballot issue or use our local resources. So in our resolution, we have and/or, which will either seek a ballot issue and use local resources, or use local resources. So we tried to put all options in the resolution. Again, it's a state requirement. If, if you want to participate in the program, these are the things that the state requires us to, to stay. So it's not really, it's not really an argument for, for us, whether what we put in or don't.
Right.
It's just what the state is requiring us to put in, so.
It gets the ball rolling on their side.
Right.
And we can choose to do neither-
Correct.
-and start over in a year, and then the ball is rolling, but we've started over in a year from now.
Right.
So at the end of the year, we don't have to, we can say we don't want to do any of it?
Correct.
Correct.
This just starts the partnership with the state to develop the master plan.
Is it your recommendation to move forward with the ELP?
Well, when I'm looking at a project in an opportunity for 26% to come back from the state, I would hate to see us pass up that opportunity. So I believe trying to work with the state on developing that master plan would be a good step forward.
We're not bound to do it.
No.
Right.
Yeah, so I, um, obviously, we've had a lot of conversation around this. You know, I, I don't know if I'm, you know, I, um, so I've got a couple graduate, I've taken a couple graduate classes in school finance, and I'm like far from being an expert in school finance, right? It's complicated stuff. I sit on a board that we are fortunate and lucky enough to hire the best treasurer in the state of Ohio. I mean, you have won awards, you have shown, you have put together five-year forecasts that have just shown our commitment to being fiscally responsible. So when I think about the ELP, and I think about what we're going to do in the district, and what we need to be doing in the district, and we all recognize that this is born out of the strategic plan, I personally believe that it's fiscally irresponsible for us not to enter into this agreement, because we're going to be passing up close to $910,000 of possible cash back from the state just from projects this summer alone. I get it, we may not move forward with it, and we might lose that, but we might forward, move forward with it, and we have that in the bank. And so I think we, as a board, have to be okay saying we're willing to give up $910,000 that the state would possibly give us back.
That, that's, that's incorrect.
Okay, help, help clarify that.
The state stuff that we saw last week said we had to pass a ballot, not just put one on the ballot.
Or use local dollars.
That is what it says.
Or use local dollars, which we have $100 million of.
And/or.
Well, again, this is my problem.
Okay.
If we knew what we were going to do, and we knew what we were going to spend, that's one thing. We have no clue.
Okay, so at the end of the year, we get rid of the resolution as a board.
And we can't find out what-
Then you don't get any credit for the money you spend anyway.
But at least we passed it, and we have in the bank if we do do something after the plan's created.
And we can't get, don't know how much we can spend until we do this to get the plan rolling. I mean, there's no-
You don't, you don't see that being-
We find that, we said that last week, that the state plan is ridiculous, but it is what the state plan is.
But it's the only way to get the-
And it is the only way to retain that money.
Yeah, it's ridiculous, but it's-
I, again, I think past-
I wish we had all the answers before the resolution, but unfortunately, it's, they require the resolution and then work through the steps.
The process.
And we're at the mercy of the state.
Right.
And again, at the end, we can say, "We don't want to do it. We're not bound to do anything that they tell us we."
To me, it's a different, it's a different situation if it handcuffs us to the decision than it is if we're not.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure our community will see it that way. I understand the, the difference that you're making, Julie, on your point. I have had a lot of discussion with Jenny about this, and I want to say thank you, first of all, to our staff, to our committee, to the facilities committee. I know a lot of time and effort's gone into this. And both of you have really tried to find a way to work within the process that is very prescriptive from the state, to try to meet everybody's needs, and I really appreciate that. I also want to be very clear that I do believe that it's appropriate to spend from our reserve funds for capital projects, and I think that fits our financial policies, and I'm very comfortable with that, provided that we involve our community in the process, and that we've all worked toward agreement on it. I said it at our meeting last week, in this process, it's still the cart before the horse for me. There is no determination on what parts of the plan we're going to implement, there's no determination on cost. We're committing to an attempt to place a ballot issue on in less than 12 months with no community involvement at this point.
Okay.
I think what Todd is referencing, and part of what I am very frustrated with, as well as a loss of local control in the process. And the state is determining what expenditures, when you read through this document, the state is determining what expenditures will be approved, they're determining the share of local dollars, they're determining when Lakota would receive the state share, and they have no commitment that they've made to us on when that would be in the future. And the state determines the timing of placing a levy on the ballot. And I have requested a master plan for some time now, but I am very uncomfortable with this process, and I can't support it at this time.
So I want to read part of what's on board docs for us, the resolution. Just because I want to make sure that we're extremely clear. We keep saying putting a ballot on the issue, and that is in the language, but it also says, "Whereas the school district board intends to move forward with a ballot issue and/or apply other local resources in November 2020, acknowledges this date may not be sooner than 12 months following the date of resolution, unless the district has a master facilities plan developed under another OFCC program." I think it's really important for us to recognize, and you've mentioned the local funds and being able to fund some of that stuff. I think that the community, if the community truly knew and understood, and we're on camera, and maybe they're listening, probably they're not, right? It's a small segment, I get, that we can reach, that I think the community needs to understand, by not making this resolution and passing it, we are saying that we don't care about the $910,000 that we could get this summer for the projects we're already committed to in our budget. And I don't believe that our community would see that as being fiscally responsible, which is up on our strategic plan, which we put on the board all the time. And so I think that if this is, again, it's not set in stone. We can pass the resolution at the end of the year, we can do our work, we can say, "This wasn't for us," and we're done with it. They are not handcuffing us, they're not telling us what we could do, but that money is going somewhere else. Another district is going to get that money, and I wish, I wanted to generate a list of every school district that's done ELP around us, that has buildings and has gotten money back, because they made the progressive decision to step up and say, "We want to get a partnership with this program, we believe in it, and we're going to do it, because we're already making investments in our buildings and in our district." We cannot pass it tonight. We can do, I think Chris said, we've got $4.7 million worth of renovations happening this summer, we have money for about $3.5 million of that to fund. 26% of that gives us the $910,000. So I think as we move forward, and we're going to make a vote, and I'm sure I can kind of get a sense of how this vote's going to go, which is fine, but I just want, if, if it goes down, or if there's a no vote, it's $910,000 that we're saying, potentially saying no to in the future. I'm good.
And as I mentioned before, I think I said it last week, we could have done some community engagement before this. We could still do that before we decided to put this board resolution on the ballot, or on the table. And we haven't done any of that.
I don't disagree with you at all by saying that, but I do need to counter that a little bit by saying, as part of this process, that's what the state does, and with their education vision person, that's sort of their bailiwick and their expertise. So it's not that that wouldn't happen, because, I mean, they were pretty clear at the work session, the different sessions and segments of groups that they would be talking to as part of this process, so.
I understand, Matt. And if the board does determine to move forward, I will support the process, but at this point, I can't support it.
Oh, I know, I know you would, yeah.
Any further discussion on this topic? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
No.
Mr. Parnell?
No.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. Do I have a motion for superintendents' recommendations B through D, personnel items, field trip, and donations?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. This brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? Come to the mic, you have three minutes. If you could please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Michael Cordy. I'm on a, just moved, sorry.
We're in Westchester, Liberty Town.
Yeah, just right up off of 747, 4686 Oakview Court. I was wondering if we can get a copy of the talking points that you're talking about for the school choice thing? Like, can you put that on the website or something, so the rest of us can call our representatives? Is it already there?
Yep, it's going to be on there tomorrow.
All right, if you've only got 48 hours, I have lots of friends, so that's why I'm curious.
Awesome.
Um, and then the report card that you keep talking about, is there a place where we can find that as well?
It's on our website.
Perfect. I'm new to all of this, so I'm just asking questions. That's it, I only need three minutes.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, thanks for coming, thanks for being here.
Right. Anyone else who would like to address the board at this time?[1631.73]
I have one other thing to take us before we end it. I'm getting messages, and this does not matter to me in the least because the University of Cincinnati is not partaking in this, but I'm hearing that the national championship game might be on the 13th.